Please rise for the public.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call me the orderer. No call.
Mary Westgar.
Yes.
Stan Camp.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Waltman.
Yes. Okay, public forum. Would I address the council? Jeff?
Yeah. I'm Jeff Shaven. I'm building these storage units down there. I watched one of the council meetings come a couple of weeks ago when the JBO people were here. I had no idea that we were going after that much of the project right away as far as... I need water and sewer to the one building. And that being said, ultimately, as a project, I think it all needs to be done, yes. But $400,000, whatever, yeah, you can see why it's not probably feasible for the near future. But, and then, there is a culvert under that west gate hole that, or under the entrance. I, we added the west entrance. The east one's the original one that was there from the previous owners. There's, there's not a culvert under that one. There's an intake on both sides. So I don't know why it would need a culvert, I guess, but there, I don't know if they couldn't see the culvert under the west one because the road ditch or whatever, but it's motive, it's, it's a, I would never put an entrance without a culvert, so. That being said, anyway, today I, bottom line is I need to get water and sewer there. I went up there to talk to Teresa today, and Jason, and Teresa met down there. I said, well, first of all, I have a one-inch line that feeds the car wash, which is not, I'm getting by with it, but I had to add a tank inside. So if I, if it's real busy, that tank will get down and I can cavitate my pumps, but I've been getting by, so, but I ultimately need to get a bigger water line up there also. So I was like, we don't know for sure if it was a one-inch that goes all the way across the road, so I was like, I was gonna hire a quality drainage this week, go down there and pothole it to see, by chance, it would be a bigger pipe on the other side. We, we didn't, no one knows. Maps don't show it, whatever. And Trent, I mean, called his potholer in, we, we pothole it, we determined it isn't one inch, unfortunately. But we come up with some other solutions, or not solutions, there's, Jason had talked to someone that we could maybe, you know, bore a two-inch for my car wash, and then use the existing one-inch to feed my building, or something like that. That would get us by. But ultimately, I agree, the water, this needs to get, I mean, we probably need a fire hydrant, I mean, it, it really does. I mean, I plan on, this building goes over, I plan on building another one, another one hopefully, or selling it to a business of some sort, I mean, we don't know that, it could be anything. But I want to thank them for coming and do that today. I mean, that, without knowing that, I mean, I'd hate to, anyone to spend money and then shoot the six-inch pipe there, because we talked to Lon Boos, and he thought, poor, there could have been a six-inch under there, so we thought, well, it was worth a try. But unfortunately, it's only a one-inch. But I don't know, going forward, how, you know, the sewer's not a problem, I mean, it's eighty foot away, I mean, eighty-foot pipe, I mean, it's not a huge deal. It's, it's the water that, I mean, I got people wanting to move in, and I have no water. Got three people wanting to move in. Will they, could they make it through the, I mean, it's just September, I mean, it's hard, gonna, everyone's busy, to get it done is, I mean, I know we can't do anything today, but I just, I, I just need to get water at some point, and I need to, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what we need to do.
Do you have any type of site plan?
As far as?
For your property down there, your development down there?
But for what we?
A site plan?
No, because it's kind of up in the air.
Like, something like this?
I mean, no, it's up in the air, what we, I mean, ultimately, I want to develop it for my own, like, what's there, and then it'll probably be a building just like that, so the doors are facing each other. Then after that, like I say, it could be, it's up in the area, of course, I'm not gonna leave it sit. I mean, I, but I, I'd rather be a, sell it to someone that uses utilities, or something like that. I mean, it's in everyone's interest for that.
I mean, because we, the city, invested, I don't know how many, get rough idea away, for out here, how much we put in here for infrastructure?
Yeah.
And we're getting nothing back on it yet today.
Where's that?
This is, this is the landing out on the east side of Lake, over there, that development, you know?
Yeah.
And then, you know, in, in that agreement, you know, the city put in the water, electrical, and then the developer put in the sewer and streets.
No, I don't have anything, because I, I don't want to say I'm doing this, and I know we're gonna be doing something, if it, whether it's me or the next person that I sell it to, I, I guess is what I'm getting at.
For us to, just like, my opinion, for us to make a refined decision on what to do moving forward, it'd be nice to know.
Right.
moving forward plans, and how we get it.
I mean, it's, I mean, I can tell you right now, there's seven units in there, there's seven hookups, seven, I mean, and, and then the next one will probably be the same, I, that's probably gonna happen, or more than likely, if we get these going, and then, sky's the limit on the next one, I don't know. I mean, I'm not gonna, I don't have the money to leave it sit like that one, probably, I guess, I don't know.
I just wanted to ask the question.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can come up with something, but I don't know if it's gonna be, what's gonna happen.
What you're saying is you want a rough idea, so if we're gonna make a plan to get water there, we want to know that enough water for what the next project down, down the line can be.
And, and to be honest, I can, I know what's gonna happen, if I, I can bore the highway, probably. I can hire someone to do it, a lot cheaper than what you guys can, but I can't afford to do a four-inch or a six-inch hydrant. If I do it, it's gonna be a two-inch, and then we're gonna be fighting this again in next year.
I think our ordinance states that we bring water to the property.
Well, we bring, we bring water to the curb stop, so wherever it would be.
Which we don't have, wherever.
Right, there is no curb stop, so it would be determined where that curb stop would be.
And then, it's, you're responsible for a street and sewer.
Where am I? Curb stop, car wash is on the concrete of the, I mean, if you're ready, you could go on the other highways, and we're gonna put it here, now I'm still in the same boat, I still got to cross the highway.
Yeah, so we, we went through some various scenarios today of what that could look like, you know, of whether we, we, we actually start the process, and we bore, you know, a, what is it, a six-inch line underneath the road, put a fire hydrant there, because there really isn't, you know, for safety purposes, there isn't anything on the, on that side of the highway where your properties are going to be. The other option would be for us to potentially bore a two-inch line, and maybe slice off, because he's having, you know, he doesn't have necessarily enough water pressure, because we wouldn't, probably, a one-inch line going to car wash, that we do, you know, do something different there and provide him water that way. So we're trying to work through a couple of various scenarios, you know.
And there's no doubt that way would solve my problem right now. But going forward, I mean, ultimately, we want to develop more, and then we're gonna be in that same, and then when now we bore it once, then we're gonna be born again, we just will, I, I don't.
Right, so, I mean, we, and we talked about the sewer main, you know, that he could, in a sense, tie off onto the manhole that's currently there, which is a little bit further down.
Right.
Probably in front of the first storage unit that you have.
Right.
And then, but then we also talked about, well, if we're gonna do it, in a sense, the right way would be to maybe put a little bit bigger line going down there, and you tie off, you know, if we're gonna, you know, so, we went, went through a couple of different scenarios, and he, I just told him it would be a good idea to kind of put, come and talk to you during open forum, and just kind of plant.
I didn't want to get you guys off, what I'm thinking, I, I didn't, when I watch that as a forum, I thought, wow, shit, I don't expect to know.
That's just it, we, our, our budget is tight.
No, I get that, I get that. And so, the sewer would get us by a long time, I mean.
Yep.
It, it's, it's whether the water, whether we want, I mean, I could, I can get a price on a two-inch going forward, and me doing it, that doesn't, it depends on how comfortable we are without a fire hydrant.
Where is the, the vet clinic's water service line coming from?
Behind the building.
Yeah, it comes from behind the building.
They don't, they, they have, they don't have any service, they don't have any curb stop in front, so they're coming from behind.
And that's a one-inch? This is the one-inch?
As far as I know, it's a one-inch to the vet clinic, coming on that picture that you have in front of you.
This, in a sense, is, is what's feeding the car, car wash, is this, this one-inch service line that comes to a curb stop here. And we pothole it today, and it's in what we think is, it's in casp, because it came across the highway, but this is the, the line that we have, you know. So that's not big enough to service both the car wash and his units.
So when you do this project, would you use an SRF loan?
I don't know that it would, I don't know the project would qualify, we'd have to check into it, I mean, we'd have to look and see.
That certainly is the way to go, to find the stuff.
Well, the beginning, depending on how quickly, I mean, for the full project, if we're doing a water sewer extension, we potentially could go that route. If it's just an immediate project to get him water, then it wouldn't, the process to go through an SRF loan is too long, we wouldn't be able to have the timeframe to get it done.
And I think it'd do steps, I mean, because either way, we got it, bore the highway, whether it be a six-inch, two-inch, get it to, I might write by the car wash, put a fire hydrant, like we talked today, whatever, I don't, I don't know a lot about it, but at least it's there. I can tie over there, and then we can extend it as a company. I mean, it doesn't have to be done right now. Hopefully, within the next couple of years, but I don't expect.
Um, well, there's a big difference, I mean, there's, there's, putting a six-inch line in there is a lot more comprehensive, because it's not just something that's flexible that you can bend. I mean, that would be something that would have to be laid out, you know, and those kinds of things. You know, to, to lay it out, in a sense, you lay it out here, and then you bore it underneath the road. So as far as time and cost, certainly a two-inch line is much more economical, you know, in, in the first front. It just depends on what we plan, you know, going down the road in the future. You know, whether you want to try and tie in a six-inch line and bring it over here, so that at least then it started, or you bring in, you know, basically, another two-inch line and come across, because of fire hydrant, there's no water main that comes any further to the west than where that fire, it dead-ends right there. So that's your only water source at this point, to get to these buildings over here.
The biggest expense probably is that it's gotta be a case, so you're talking a six-inch, probably gotta be in a ten-inch pipe going under the highway, so that, that's the.
Yeah, and that's the tricky part, because it's a, it's going anywhere.
Is the one-inch one now in a four-inch casing?
It's in a two-inch casing, yeah.
By the next council meeting, we could have some different options for the council?
Benny is supposed to be giving me numbers, we talked to him today, he obviously was busy on another project, but, I mean, he did state that a two-inch line's gonna be substantially cheaper, but when it comes to a six-inch line, he couldn't do anything until the crop is out of the field, because of way, the way he has to lay it, because it's, it doesn't bend. So he has to be able to use a portion of that field to lay the pipe out in order to get it to go. So whenever the crop would come out, would be the earliest he could start on a six-inch.
Will that be soon enough, Jeff?
If I could get anything, then yay, yay, I, I mean, I'll move on, I guess, but I mean, yeah, it's, it'll have to be. I mean, I just would like to get water before winter, because it's not gonna happen.
We all know we need to get your water.
Exactly, but it's also September 1st, coming in a hurry, and that's the only thing I'm worried about. The sewer, he said he'd come this week, because he would like to feed the gas company there, because they're coming to put the gas main in. They did their one call, so they'll be here within fifteen days, I assume, and that way, because he's gonna be under it with the sewer pipe, so he just, he's, anyway, he's got to deal with gas, and so, that, not saying we, I know the water's not gonna have a lot of that. I mean, I, I, I understand that, but.
You'll be on the agenda next council meeting, and we'll have prices around, we know we gotta get you some.
Okay, I just wanted to bring it up, and I, and I thank you guys for doing what you did today, I, I didn't expect to do it today, but we did, so.
They tried real hard.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public forum? This will be your chance for the public to speak during the meeting, otherwise you're not gonna do that.
I got a question.
Go ahead.
Actually, I'm just, I got my notes here, if you don't have a teleprompter. These are just planning and zoning questions, I'm not here to represent the board, but just looking at the paper and seeing what's been going on, and just ask if there are some issues the council would like us to address, as the time gets longer. I did talk to Teresa about this today a little bit. So I don't know if you can get together or not today or anything, but at least come up and see what some of the concerns that you might have, that might make things a little bit easier for you. It seems to me, anyway, that we have some enforcement or compliance issues that should be defined and resolved. I believe the city council should not be continually placed in situations of making decisions on providing variances, and if the proper procedure is in place, we should not feel guilty of holding those accountable in those situations. Some of the things on my mind were our definition of a one-story as compared to a one-and-a-half story. Everybody has a different definition, and it's always trying to work their way. I think we need to define something based on footage, or, or whatever, Teresa can work on that for us, but, you know, somebody might call it a walkout basement, and then it's a two-story. And our guidelines are based on a one-story, because that's the base, you know, and there's just things like that. Our definition of, of the height of the structure, I think we should, and we did in the P&amp;Z meeting, the last one, we did talk about that a little bit. And Teresa's kind of been working at different other communities, and what they have, we're very weak, obviously. And I think that we should have some type of compliance during the construction, so your decisions are not made after the completion of the project. It doesn't seem like we, in the middle, say, okay, you can't do that, you know, or, I would rather, you guys make decisions on stuff like that, and, but I think, I, I don't know if we need a committee, or a couple of people, or, I asked Teresa, you know, how about an employee that's on a salary that can go by there every week and, and take a look at it, and see if they're kind of compliant, but, and they, and they may not make a decision, but at least they can view it and identify issues that might come up. And honestly, I, I think we should involve the contractor to comply, as well as the property owner, and be responsible for the penalties. I told Teresa today, I said, that's just one more person that's looking at it, trying to protect themselves, they, they might not do something that's on the line. But that's all I had, and I just wanted to pass that along with Teresa, and she said we're gonna have a board meeting here pretty soon, and maybe talk about some of that stuff, so. Nothing else.
I, I agree, there, there's just so many things that is confusing, that it, it almost needs, your team and our team need to get together, and get some things that are hard, so that nobody, there's no, no question about it, it's black and white, here it is.
It's difficult, we have an old community here, and with the late, and, you know, it's difficult to make them, and they, they've been made through many, many years, and we've had to adjust here and there. So we're always gonna have unique situations, and there's always, no matter what we do, there's always gonna be something that comes in. But there's also a lot of property owners that want it only their way, and they're gonna do everything they can to get something out, so. But I think, I'd rather have you guys be in a better position to make decisions that maybe they're not compliant. Not based on how you feel about it, as far as, you know, it's really not bothering people that much, you know, but basically, knowing that they didn't comply, and they should, you know, so, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak at public forum? Ready?
Yeah, I'd like to speak a little bit about building permit on Third Park Lake with. I don't believe the same place right now, and I just wanted to mention that to you before you bore the building permit. And also, I had concerns about the one-story, I, I believe it's a two-story building, I'd like to, you know, to kind of discuss that a little bit for us. Do you want to speak to that now, or do you want to speak to it, whether you're voting for the building permit, or?
We'll wait until the council gets to the agenda.
Okay.
What else?
I didn't bring any notes, and I could have used a teleprompter, that wouldn't have hurt a thing. I'm, I guess I'm just here to voice some opposition to the bond issue for $1.3 million. I guess I'm just curious how they can get short $1.3 million.
Actually, that could be, that's a public hearing, we're gonna have that.
There'll be a public hearing, can you not?
So you'll be able to speak then?
It's tonight, you just need to wait till the public hearing.
Wait for them while they're here.
Wait for the public hearing.
Oh, you have time for notes?
I got time, no, I can help.
Anyone else? Consent agenda, any additions or corrections, if not a motion to approve?
The only thing that you don't have is the financial report, because I wasn't, I literally spent ten minutes in my office today, so I wasn't able to get it finalized the way I wanted it, so you'll have it next week.
I'll make that motion. Second?
I'll second.
No call.
Beckman?
Yes.
Stan Camp?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Waltman?
Yes.
Okay, community director report, Jason?
We had the check valves replaced on the Crescent Parkway station, mowing, fixing the mower, skid loader, the mower on the skid loader, changed out some water meters, fixed the tension on the volleyball net, locates have been going crazy lately, got the materials ready for the community center, lowered the neutral for the interduct, and set the sectionalizer and transformer basement, readout, finished the mud volleyball pile, free dirt that was given to us for new resident that's building a home with their basement, moved items for the premier event, picked up barricades, pushed out the brush pile, fixed the issues at the campground, worked on misreeds, community center trenching, pulley wire, interduct, had the street sweeper out a little bit, changed out some more meters, picked up a tree, chopped down a couple of trees, took some branches down that were what I would call widowmakers, dug some holes for some plants on the signs. Would really like to thank Beth Nate and Mary Ann Peters. They had, they fixed the two main signs coming in on 175, they had them painted, and got all the weeds, and did their flowery touch, and made them look nice and pretty. And we did take the sign down south of town, because they're repainting that also, so it'll batch the rest of the signs with the vibrant colors again, since they faded. Worked on the car wash issue today, top, worked with quality drainage on the service line for Mr. Babcock, and that's just kind of a short run of things.
How many water meters do we have to replace out of that, I'm working on, you know?
Out of the list that we had, we were down to about nine, but there is a couple are, the last I knew, with the last readout, Tammy had more to add.
Thank you, Jason. City administrator report?
I've been finalizing the paperwork for the wastewater treatment plant, getting all of that sent into the Iowa Finance Committee with V. Strangham to finish that up. We were able to, we're getting another check for whatever the Woodall electric bill was for about, not quite, $9,000. We're gonna get another check from the bonding company on that, so they're gonna cover that. And finalizing the paperwork for the federal grant that we got for the water main project on 175, I've been working with Region 12, trying to get all of that paperwork finalized, we'll get those signatures taken care of and sent back to them, so that's done and complete. I've got two invoices I need to figure out, been working with the community center board on different things, trying to get some stuff finalized, working with the contractor out there on a couple of issues that arose, which one of them you have, I, which you, I mean, an issue with the, the gas line, I think that we kind of have what the solve is, it's just, is gonna be a little different later, if I know. And that, spent some time today, trying to work on the building permit for Mr. Augren, and then talking with Jason on solving, or how we're gonna get water over to those, Mr. Shavens' constructions.
On that community center gas line, I want to make sure that we do not use OSHA 2, for the safety of the future building, or number two, a two-inch black steel pipe, if we add it space, I did not think that'd be a safe route, I'd rather do that polymer thing, it's a stainless steel line. Do it the right way for safety features, in case there's ever leaking or anything.
Right.
If that makes sense, I don't know if that's what we're gonna talk about now, but I just wanted to make sure.
No, I, I mean, this was presented to me on Friday, or late Friday, so this actually isn't on the agenda, I was just giving it to you for information, but we can certainly have a discussion on it.
Thank you very much. York, please report?
So, excuse me, last month, we had over 200 calls for service. I've been kind of busy with helping some cases with higher people than me, all week, last week, they did, probably the federal government. I set up an appointment to get a cars decal, we're gonna start doing that next Monday, so I'm gonna start jumping off cars. Other than that, I had a meeting with Kenny to try to do the school act of sugar planning again, just so we're all on a standardized plan. I have another one coming up on Friday, for us to officially put that in place. But other than that, school's back in session, and kind of happy about that, so, yeah, that's it, that's all we got.
Thank you, York.
Thank you.
Okay, on the first building permit, Dave Nelson, your motion to approve?
I'll approve.
Second, I can, no call.
Beckman?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Stan Camp?
Yes.
Waltman?
Yes.
Next building permit, Richard Augren, wants to go to Lakeview Drive, this was signed off by Eric, also.
Well, Eric took a look at it, and I went and took a look at it again today, because apparently there were some potential issues with it. And so, Jason, actually, Jason and I went out, we went on a string line from the front property pin to the back property pin on both sides of the, of the property, with what they stated they're going to do to remove a, a piece of what's already there. On the west side, there's no issues, or, excuse me, on the east side, there isn't any issues. On the west side, the, the, what I would call the lakeside front, when we ran the string line, that would be where we have some compliance issues. The original foundation, in the backstory of this, the building permit was based on them doing an addition and a garage, and then they found some structural issues which weren't necessarily communicated with the city, and then the, the entire structure came down. With that, I basically told them that they had to apply for a new building permit, and then the, the side yard setback, because more than 50% of the, the structure basically went to waste. And according to our zoning, then that's a requirement. So today, I went, Jason, and actually, Trent helped me with stringing, basically, a, a string line from the front to the back, so we kind of knew where we were at, so we could measure properly, or at least as close and proper as we could, instead of trying to do a site thing. And that front, that, that what I call front corner is not compliant. I did have a conversation with the Dalton family today, and they also realized that they're encroaching on the backside of the property, and they said that there had been a long agreement between the two, that there, there wasn't really an issue. They don't have any problem with them building back on the current structure. I asked for something formal, obviously, I, you know, they couldn't put any formal agreement together by this evening, but my understanding, according to the Dalton family, that that is in the works. Um, but my understanding according to the Dalton family that that is in the works.
So are you talking the str- the corner of the house or the deck?
Well, currently there is, currently there is no deck and I don't know if the deck is included on the.
Page 14 says deck.
So, yeah, I mean, I don't know. I just know that the front structure, because, you know, the deck obviously would be, um, actually sitting on the property line. Um, as you go towards the lake, um, that front corner structure, you know, where the structure would be, that is where it would be, you know. My assumption, and again, that they could do something different and cut that deck off to make it compliant because there is no deck there. The original foundation is about two feet off of where it would be compliant. So they're short about two feet from the property line.
Okay, so you're talking the corner of the house?
The corner of the house.
Okay.
Yes.
So if, if the, the neighbor agrees to let them build closer to the property line, that's still a difference. And, and that means, I'll use my deck as an example. He wants to put a two-car garage there, but his son owns the house next to him. So now he can build up to the property line because it'll be an agreement from his neighbor?
And I'm not, I'm not disput, I'm not disputing that point at all.
Okay, I'm just asking.
My, my, my comment today was that they needed to figure out some land, something or other, if they wanted to have it. Or else they were going to have to go for a, um.
So you're saying that they're talking about doing a land swap to make it?
Potentially, yes. They were going to make some type of a formal agreement that, you know, either on the backside so that, you know, that the encroachment that they have on their parking area, you know, then would go, you know, forward to some degree so that then it was.
So we can't approve this until we get that agreement?
We can approve it now.
Right.
No, we can approve it now.
No, we can't. We don't have, we've no, we've got a verbal agreement between them.
That's allowing for that.
That doesn't allow them to approve it. A verbal agreement can go poof right out the window once we approve it.
Oh, I disagree with that. I think that they, this has been held up long enough. They've got an agreement between the two of them. I think that, that they know they're going to get this fixed because the driveway is on Rich's property now. And so they just need to, they need to lay out the paperwork. And the Dalton family said when we get up here in the next couple of weeks, they're going to get it all laid out. And we'll be able to backfeed that paperwork back to the, back to the piece.
And, and are we going to allow the deck to be that much further over then?
That depends on, I, I don't think there's anything on the deck right now. John, you don't have, you don't have the layout of the deck yet. The deck will probably be decided once they get that, once they get the, whatever they decide on a land swap. If it's a triangular thing on both sides, then you, you won't have any issue with what he wants to do with the deck. Because he'll have enough room for that four-foot setback on both sides.
So aren't there different guidelines for Liquid Drive? Aren't there, Gary?
Well, um, they put it in place on the front end, so I put on the back side. Uh, I'm just saying my opinion, I agree, disagree with you, Jim, completely. If you're going to take that much credit on a multiple agreement, you don't know what kind of pressures there are. If you're going to, you're going to say okay, then we're not going to have any trouble. Because the next property owner is not, they shouldn't even be involved except for the swap when they think one get funding.
The power is, it came up again, it came up again today. And it's the last second thing all the time over the weekend. This was fine until last week and then all of a sudden it's not again. And I think Rich has gone through this for a long time.
Did they realize that Eric was incorrect when he said and he signed it? Did they realize that he was incorrect and he's two feet from the house?
No, I don't think they realized that.
Well, Eric wasn't, obviously. But would you be considering this permit if you knew it was two feet from the house?
I wouldn't if we hadn't already talked to both landowners about trying to work something out, especially because of the problem on the front side. Where the, the, the property owner that, that, the other property owner has most of their property on Rich's property. So they need to get this cleaned up and straightened out. And they discussed it with us to get it cleaned up and straightened out. Just at the witching hour of the last minute, when he's got a building permit approved and contractor is ready to go again. The project needs to move forward for the guy. It's been, it's been long enough now that, that it's been delayed for him. So I think it's time for him to get it done.
What I'm saying.
And again, it'll backfeed us. It'll be on my problem then if it comes out that, that it didn't happen. Because I'll be on it to make sure that it happened. I was at the site today.
Sure.
And I'll continue to be at the site to make sure that Eric's the way that he was to go. But this family, these two families have had years and years of.
The neighbor shouldn't even be involved.
I agree.
That's right.
I agree with that.
If they're two feet from the outline.
And which neighbor shouldn't be involved?
Either one of them.
Well, the one neighbor needs to be involved because it's two feet from his lines. So that, that they have, they have made an agreement with each other to make it work. There's going to be some land swapping, some things.
But I mean, the neighbor shouldn't be involved in this discussion about a permit. This, this right here discussion should be in compliance of what our zoning is. If they want to do that, and that's fine. I have no problem with that. But we can't discuss hardly, how can a permit when it's not even compliant? And things change, you know that. I mean, I, and things are going to go up and they're not going to take them back down. And, uh, this.
Jim was on a motion to approve that building permit?
That was a motion to approve the building.
Um, we got our city attorney and I'd like your advice on this. And what would you advise the council to do? Would it be okay with us to go with a verbal agreement between the neighbors?
No. Until the property lines are correct and the site plan is compliant with our zoning ordinance, then the council could approve it. But it could be, uh, void evidence. I mean, wouldn't be right for you to do that. Void evidence.
So, so my next question is, once they get that land swap done, then they would be in compliance, correct?
If they, if they swap that two or four foot, wherever he is, I mean, seven, six.
On the, on the, yeah, on the, on the front end.
And how much time are we talking for that to happen?
I assume a couple of weeks before they get up there, the adult there?
I don't really know when, or when my builder will get back to me if he hasn't started another project. But we want to, he must, we need to get him back up there because we've got, how many people wait and do it for us? So that, well, and, you know, the homeowner, he's getting very concerned that Brunner's going to come on and he's not going to have the outside done. And, because this is my one, it's a long time. The builder I got, I mean, he's really, really busy and, and very good. I mean, he did, he did my last project up here with Mr. Bruny. And that's why I wait for him. And, I mean, he, because everything after, beyond code and everything else, and price-wise, it's unreal for what he gets to do. And I mean, it's cheap. And he's very conscious, it's got to be right or he won't do it. And that's part of the reason the structure all been down too. Because, I mean, for the safety of them and for anybody working on it for doing it. He wouldn't build off it and I wouldn't either. And as far as like the south or the lakeside, I was the front, I guess. I keep getting the teams, I don't think I'll live here, but, um, okay, Edwell had it come anyhow because there ain't no sellers. Rotted away, that's what the deck was up against. And that part of the house was added on. That's the problem with the house, it was added on so many times. It was just the piecework, the alone. And there's nothing there to do anywhere.
So how, when does the sooner steam be back, is it?
I will, I can find out tonight, but I don't know if, I don't, I don't, I know it probably won't be this week. Maybe it won't be next week, but I'd be about as soon as we probably get it insured. Because I'm sure, I don't know what he's got going, that's, you don't tell me, so.
So, so I'm trying to buy time here so we can get that agreement done between the two property owners. Maybe because I think that's, that's important, you know, because. I'm not sure if you're aware, but there is two landlords, or two landlords on there. Marty and Liz. And one's for trade land, the other one's against it. So you have to get them in agreement before, before you even.
What was the, what was the comment, what was the comment today, Teresa?
I talked with them, Tracy and I both talked with them.
I, I talked with Teresa who has basically to say, because it was supposed to transfer, um, at some point. And I believe that they're actually going to be the property owners, is my understanding.
Yeah.
And, um, their comment today, and I don't, I mean, I'm not making recommendations here or there. What she told me today was information that was different than what I had heard. And, you know, basically the, their comment was that they've had this long agreement with them for a long time. I said, well, then that thing's written, written down. And she said that they have no problem with him building back onto the, as long as they don't build beyond the structure, that they have no problem with him building back on the current structure. Because I said it's not, you know, not compliant. And I said, you guys would at some point have to get a formal agreement in order to make all of this happen. Whether, you know, you know, land swap so that it's in compliance. Because technically now that, you know, I tried to explain that now that it's 50% gone, you know, all of this kind of thing. Um, so, you know, at the end of the day, my understanding is that the property owners do not have an issue with it. But again, I don't disagree with also the statement that the neighbor shouldn't be involved in this either. But, you know, um.
So. You're, you're talking to Teresa and I'm talking to Liz.
Right, but Teresa told us the property was going to be transferred into their names and they were going to be the new owners.
She's a set dog in law.
I understand that. We talked with her.
But I, but I had the gentleman on the phone with me as well.
Yeah, the, the son too.
So it was basically concurrent with both of them. I had two people, uh, Teresa's husband on the phone with me today as well, who, you know, stated that they, you know, didn't have any issues with, with this at all. Now, at the end of the day, do they have the final say in it? No, council does. Um, and I don't disagree with that. Um, and we just need to figure out how to, you know, we strung, we strung line on both sides. And, you know, I was dealing with a whole bunch of people, you know, one side, neither side are technically compliant. The, the gentleman, you know, Logren's compliant on one side, the other property owner, Randy, you know, that string line, there's just, when you deal around with the lake and non-conforming properties, this is an extreme challenge for anybody, I don't care who you are, to trying to determine, um, where everything should sit. And when you, when you, when everything's so close knit at hand, trying to determine when the, when the foundation is there. And then you're like, okay, if they hadn't taken the foundational, you know, if they had taken the foundation and ripped it completely out and you were dealing with just dirt, you could say, no, you need to put it back to here. And so, but when the foundation is still there, it's kind of hard to say, well, now you're going to have to tear out the foundation to make it compliant. But you have the code, so you have to follow that. And, you know, he would have to bring it, you know, basically two feet in to, to become compliant with, with the side yard setback. But then when you look at the driveway and you see they're probably about six feet off the side yard setback, it becomes a challenge because those properties are, sit in there. Um, you know.
So the property isn't transferred to these people yet that sit on the state yet?
It is in the process. The paperwork has been signed. It was done in July. The, when you look on Beacon, it hasn't been transferred yet because it just takes that amount of time to get everything over. So.
But we need an agreement for these dollars?
You've got lock pins right now and that's what you measure it off of, right? What do they take those, what do they put those lock pins down for?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, that's why, that's why I did a string line today. So that I could make a, a determination on side yard. Because just doing it by sight, you couldn't, I mean, by sight, you kind of could say, you could, you could say that it would be appropriate. If you looked at the front pin and the back pin and then you tried to make that visual line, that's why we, that's why I did a string line.
You want a line. And that's what you did?
Yeah.
And who's on, who's off and who's on? The one on the east side is off and the one on the west side is off, right?
Well, I mean.
Yes, that's what it is.
Yeah.
So the one on the west side is, on the east side, that's the one they have the problems with. They're not having problems on the east side.
Well, on the, on the, well, on the west side they are. Because technically on the west side, they're not compliant, according to the, the side yard setback.
Those people have no complaints. And he, and Logren doesn't either. It's on the east side when, when he's got eight inches of sidewalk, that's going to get caught off there. Because he has the right to cut it off to the property line. And that's property line, that's not a straight line, that's property line. So you got to go by that.
I'm just trying to enforce our code, sir. If I say something, um, doesn't really pertain to this, but Lakewood, the Lake property is difficult. Teresa's right. And, and, and Lakewood used to have different ordinances, which Gary should know more about than I do. They had non-conforming. So Lakewood, Lakewood was treated different than anybody else around the lake. But I don't, I just remember three years ago, maybe four, there was a property on North State Road where they went to the variance thing and said, we want to put the wall, the, the, the current wall of the garage is non-conforming. They went to the variance and asked them if they could build back up on that same wall. And they said yes. And then they tore it all down and built right there. That's just the kind of things that when you're looking at this building.
Are you talking about the twin towers?
No. No.
I'd like to comment on that, but you said, we're going to make our rules because of the variances that they've done through the years. And we shouldn't have any rules. I'm sorry.
Well, no, I'm just saying that when you look at this new, when you look at the problems you're having.
I know.
That is one. Because Lakewood is different, Gary. I know it's different in the zoning book, but I don't know what, what's different. I'm not saying, it doesn't pertain to that. Basically what my understanding is, all of the Lakeshore properties follow this, the Lakeshore zoning. The Lake, they.
No, I think he's correct on that. Lakewood Drive or Lakewood has a different, I think it's a side yard setback.
And it could be.
Instead of, on a two-story, instead of being six, that's before. But I don't know either, I had to look.
Right.
My house on Lakewood Drive, it's six foot for two-story, five foot for a story, and so now. And I had to comply with the overhang, five and six feet.
So that's different than in town. I knew it was different on, I knew you were right on that.
I thought it was less. I mean, I would really, I.
I know exactly what it was. I go along with it.
Because it's four, it's four in town on the side yard.
In certain spots.
And you're including your overhang. I mean, you know, it has to be four feet from the overhang. And I thought Lakewood was different. But I'm just saying that they allowed that and that was the variance board. And I'm just saying, so if you're looking at the new building inspector and how he does things, those are some of the things that have happened.
But I did, you did bring up the point though, where the E3 permits, the twin towers, they were built. And they had that agreement where they had a garage that were on the other property. And they had a mutual agreement, but we tore them houses down and that agreement went away. And them two neighbors didn't want, one neighbor didn't want to build back on this property. They sold that property. So I remember, I was on the council, I think you were, I know you were, you were, you were. We, we did not allow them to rebuild that garage back on the other person's property.
So I want to, I want to go back to Jim and everybody to, if they had this agreement to swap those pieces of property, we'd be in compliance, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes. If, if they did that.
If they follow through with their agreement.
Yeah, so a single, and Lakeshore, Lakeshore Residential District is which, which is what this is. For a single, single-story dwelling, um, side yard, least width on any side is four feet.
There are special provisions in there someplace about Lakewood specifically.
Yeah, there is.
I know there is.
I just don't know what they are, but.
There's a little section that says in Lakewood area.
Yes.
Nobody really don't need to know what they are right now.
Nothing whether it would have any bearing on this particular building permit.
I think it'd be just a bit.
And you said no? Is that what you said?
So what I've said is that it's not done until it's done.
Right.
Right.
What, what if we put the ball in their court, that is there any way that if they have a copy of the agreement? And they sign it, email it, or, or, you know what I'm saying? Just to make sure that we have our decks in the roll, but trying to speed, speed up the process? I remember we went through this with Ben, who was going to say, well, I'm buying that piece of ground between the two so I can build on the property line. And we made him buy that before we let him build on the property line. And then now he's not.
Dave, you'd be right. You have a simple agreement signed by both parts.
No? He's saying no, not to the streets, right?
But it's recorded. And like Whitey says, you can do that, uh, computer. It's not, it's not that. It's not, it's not that, it's not a state law.
Three years.
Email the, the original copy to your lawyer, and he records it. I'm just saying, we need, the city needs to have a recorded document specifying that they have your property rights in order to comply with our zoning, and our zoning regulations.
So, it sounds like though that they have to agree with it, so it's just, they need to pay for it.
And I'd really like to be treated with some...
That's, yeah.
If you wanna speak, or...
It was what, like 20?
I don't understand.
Yeah, that's right.
I bought a house three years ago in Lakeview, a little over three and a half now, and we started construction on it. Mr. Lawren bought a house at the same time. And he started this process at the same time we did. This has been going on three years. His first builder didn't want to build because of a neighbor, and didn't want to build, from my understanding, wasn't in conversation, so he quit. He got a new builder, which happens to be my builder, and he waited till I'm done with my house, I'm Mrs. Burney, to go on to the next property. And here, Rich, Mr. Lawren sets again, two years later. Every time they make a step, first it was a concrete, first it was a first building, it was approved. Then it was a second one, was approved. A stop order was put on the property for the concrete, which never existed. When it came down to it, I mean, that's my understanding, and they finally got through with the concrete. And now he starts to build, and what happens? Again! So, is this town going to allow individuals or committees to run people out of your town because they can't get anything done by this council and by people on committees in this town? And I'm just asking the question. I don't know.
I'll answer that question for you. I took the oath of office when I got elected to be on the city council to take the oath to follow the codes of our city, whether I agree with them or not.
Three years.
I'm following the, when I vote, I'm following the codes. Whether I agree with them or not, there are codes put in place by planning zoning or whoever. So, that's when I vote to follow the codes.
So, every time this young man tries to get something done, somebody stops it. But it's all been approved by Eric. Everything's been signed up. It was right. So, who's right? Wouldn't it be signed up by your own person? Or is it somebody else who wants to protest it? I don't know. I'm just as new to, I mean, I'm not new to this town. I've been on this for like three years. So, I'm normally new, you know, new to this town. But I don't understand how come it's so difficult and made so much difficult for three years. We're not talking three months. This is a three-year deal this kid's going through.
I'll make one comment here is that this conversation wouldn't have been taken care of if Eric would have gotten it correct. You would, you would have known, whatever he applied for, that he was two feet, gonna build two feet from the line.
Sign it.
You know, I was brought, I just heard about this stuff, you know, and it's like, I don't know when Eric did it, I'm not blaming him completely because I don't know what the conversation was when he went out and took a look at the property. Was it surveyed? Was there stakes there?
Yeah, they did. They did.
How could you...
How can you be that far off? You got your lock pins there, and they measured before.
When you're standing there, when, when I was standing there looking at it today and I, I could see where the conversation could be when you're looking at, because it's, it, where the, the, because the back of the property, the backside, when it's not the lake side, the backside makes 40 feet. The front side on the lake side is less than 30 feet. So, when you're looking at it and you're trying, because until we ran the string line today, it was one of those is like, if you're standing there eyeballing it and then you took a measure and you took four feet, and it's like, yeah, it looks right. I mean, yes, and the property had been surveyed. When you look at the front, when you go, when you're just doing a visual from the front to the back, you know, it looks like it works. But when I did the string line today, just because I wanted to make sure on the string line of where we sat, you know, from the front to the back, it, it, it was off, you know, it's just like our aerial when you look on Beacon. That's probably off probably 10 or 15 feet versus, you know, what I used to advertise when I was a county assessor and it was only two to three. Our, you know, the overview isn't, sometimes it's difficult unless you actually do, do, you know, and you, you take and you run a string line and you make the measurement because there isn't necessarily laid out from one to the other.
But a certified person, a certified person put those, that line down, those pins, he went off those pins. He's got a certain, where it's straight. No, your line's straight, that's the danger, because you're taking measure, I mean, we're gonna...
Say then we're gonna be done.
One more thing to say.
Go ahead, then we're done.
I think they knew when they handed in the building permit, that it was not four foot, that they were not in compliance, because on page 14 of his building permit, it says in real fine print, "We think we are close to four foot." Most contractors use a tape measure, I don't know. You know, so, we think, we think it's four foot.
I would like, can I say something?
Yeah, I have a question for you, John, first.
Yes, I use, I use a tape measure, and the agreement was always between Mary Lee and Richard, and she passed away unfortunately, that we knew the decker stuff was closer than it's supposed to be, but the agreement was between them. She didn't care, and she would sign anything she needed so that we could put it back where existing structure was. When she passed away in between time, now her siblings are agreeing to the same thing. And I don't think it's right that somebody on the council can sit there and call them up and sit there and threaten, or basically lie to them and tell them that Richard's sit there and he's gonna take out that retaining wall, and he's gonna do blah, blah, blah. I spent 45 minutes Saturday, or Monday after lunch, when Richard called me because he got done talking to him, because she was all upset because she thought that he was gonna make him take all that out of it. Now, where the heck did that come from? This is BS. I mean, they was completely compliant, they still are, they get along great.
I have one question for you.
Yeah.
Can you tell me how this is a story and a half?
Yeah, look at the front. That's the dormers going back.
So, that the dormers are higher than the rip line?
Yeah.
That's...
I can put that front rip line up that high, too.
Gary, that's part of the...
Up there, up there is what, um, the guy in the laundry yard, I just draw that up.
Okay, we're gonna, evidently, according to our city attorney, we have to make for some agreement. We're watching. Is that what the council's doing? The motion died for lack of a second for each other. The motion died for lack of a second.
So, I'm like, the motion that we wait on this building permit curves or...
I don't think any motion, we just gonna take an action.
Right.
We're gonna take an action.
You're right, same thing.
Same thing, guys.
You're not helping. Did you just hear what he's gonna do? He's gonna sell everything he has, and he's gonna move out of your town, and you won't have no taxes on him.
Did you just hear what John said?
I heard what he said.
They already knew they were across the property of setbacks.
On who's, on what side? On what side?
It doesn't matter which side.
It sure does!
We sat there on Randy's side. I agreed, we would saw that.
I don't care which side it is. They're not reading the setback. You can't, I can't go to Dave, if I'm Dave Wolman's neighbor, I can't go to Dave Wolman and say, "Hey, I wanna build a deck too close to the setbacks. Can you give me permission to do that?" We can't do that in town. Everybody in town will build next to it.
You've been doing it for how many years?
Yeah.
Excuse me, but there was no problem until they took too, took too much of the structure down. Okay, are, would you want to have that be your home, and somebody comes in and builds on it? Well, then, Teresa falls down, or you can't do anything with it? I mean, come on. We sat there, we are not changing the footprint of it, or nothing there. The only thing that Mr. Wolman called is upset about, sat there, he, he's, he didn't like the way we did the cement, so we changed it. Then he was ticked off the way we put it in. Well, I hate to tell you this, but Rich is a disabled veteran, and that might be coming to plague here yet. And this, we don't wanna go down that road. We just wanna build him a nice home, he can enjoy his lake life. Like everybody around the lake that has a home. Why else would you buy a home at the lake? I've been working up here three years now. I love it up here. I sit there every noon hour. After I finish my lunch, I drive around the lake. It's very relaxing.
Well, I, the council's not gonna take any action, I apologize. And Mrs. Burney and I have no answer for you.
Pardon?
I don't have an answer for you to your question.
Right, and that's what I guess I ask you and every council, why isn't there an answer to that question? Why does it take three years for this to go through for some bit? I would have left this town and left my property, and you made me go three years. And I kinda wanted to think that I've done a good job revitalizing that home and that area.
Is it the city's?
But yet you wanna correct somebody else. And yes, I am personally, well, he's a graduate of my husband.
Is it the city's fault though that the, the existing home that was there is rotten, so they had to tear it down?
It is the city's fault for doing it for three years, sir. I don't care what you say, by dragging it out for three years is a crime and harassment.
We're all done. We're gonna move on. I'm happy. I'm sorry if that happened. Okay, we'll open a public hearing on authorized and sale of city property, which would be the regular property. Any public information that the public would like to share? If not, we'll close the public hearing?
Sir?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to speak. Just so that I understand the terms of the sale. The city attorney and I have discussed this, and what I understand that is a proposal that there would, you would sell five feet from the existing property line on a sort of an east and west, east and west line from the survey state down on the lake deck, the survey state that's in the, in the cement alley. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
That's my understanding.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I understand what the...
Five, five feet to, I'm gonna, oh, to the north?
Five feet to the...
North, from the, from the east and west state, yes.
From the east and west state, five feet to the north.
Right.
Okay, and am I correct that the property would be offered for public auction? Then, on the terms, one of the terms would be that the minimum acceptable bid would be $22,500? Is that correct?
Twenty, twenty-one, five.
Twenty-one, five, okay. All right.
That, that's what was in the public notice.
And we've never... I also heard twenty, that it had been changed by the council to twenty-two, five. Understand what the parameters of the, of the bid process, yes, of this auction are going to be.
And now we're gonna start the public auction, and I've never done it before, so I have no idea what we're gonna do. I'm assuming we have a...
Dave?
Does the hearing close?
The hearing, the public hearing's closed.
Are you, are you done, Mr. Seagull?
I, I am done. Now, uh, I will have more to say after the conclusion of the public auction.
All right, that's Mr. Mayor, but...
Because I think, I, I, I think five feet does not do Mr. Ragland any good at all. And in fact, would require him to cut through a retaining wall and, uh, I would propose a different solution to the problem. Uh, I spoke with the DNR at length about the requirements for someone to buy property and install a dock. I also know that the neighbors of Mr. Ragland's to the, to the west do not want anything built that would block their view of the lake, and that's certainly understandable. And we would propose a solution that would take care of their problem, but also take care of Mr. Ragland's problem without too much more hassle to the city. But it would involve expanding from five feet to a greater distance.
Are you prepared to expand on that at this point?
Yes, I am prepared to expand on it. Yes, I am. Now, I have with me a provision of the Iowa Administrative Code relating to docks. Okay, now, first of all, the DNR will not allow more than one dock per 10-foot of lake shore. Now, they will not, they will require, docks are required to be not less than four feet wide, nor more, nor more than six feet wide. And they do require from each edge of the dock a five-foot setback. So, in other words, if you looked at property and property, how much property would it take to build a legal dock on? It would take 14 foot. Five foot on each side of the dock plus four foot for the dock itself. Now, the only problem with that, with the DNR, if the, if those were the dimensions, you could not, as I understand from the administrative rules, construct a hoist on that dock. Because you wouldn't have enough width. The DNR would not allow any protrusion off either side of the dock as it goes out into the lake. So, what that means is essentially, we had come before, even before, and discussed 15 feet. Well, 15 feet might be a problem because that would permit someone to buy the property and construct a dock, not a hoist on the dock, but a dock. So, our proposal would be that the city offer for an auction with the property 13 and a half feet running north from the existing property line. That would not only solve the city's, the neighbor's problem, and, and that, I should expand further on that. And that we enter into an agreement with the city that if Mr. Ragland were the successful bidder at such an auction, that he would agree that the additional property that he would be purchasing could not be sold unless his existing property was sold with him. So that if, any, so he couldn't sell the property to anybody else without selling the whole lake house and the property encompassing the lake house. He would also agree in a written document, in other words, legal document, that would be filed in the courthouse and would be an encumbrance on his existing real estate, that he would construct no structure that would advance north of his existing house forever. No, no, no additional construction with the, now, he would construct a new patio deck. You know, I'm talking about a vertical structure. So, he's prepared to do that, but the five foot really doesn't do him any good. And it would take 13 and a half feet, it would take him past the edges of that existing patio deck and past any problems that he would have because right now, the property line cuts through the house. Five foot, making, moving it five foot further north means that not only, wouldn't cut through the house any longer, but it would cut through much of the sidewalk and the retaining wall on the north side of the lake part of the, of the area. It just wouldn't work. And, and create a, create a very small deck that would just have to come out of it. But if you made it 13 and a half feet, he would, I think it would solve his problem. It would not endanger the neighbor's view at all, and I think it would put the problem to rest. Now, I do wanna mention the history of this problem. I did not know this until I appeared at the city council at the last meeting I spoke at, that a certain individual from Dennison was involved with the construction of that house. I don't know how the house got constructed over the property line. Who knows? Because it went from that original construction person to the parents of Mark Hanson, the Chevrolet owner notable, and then to him. And, um, he thought that there was no problem because it hadn't surfaced for years. Nobody said anything. So, here we are. But we are looking for a solution to the problem so that the problem can go away without harming the neighbors or anybody else. So, we would propose that the city sell 13 and, 13 feet, six inches. That would solve Mr. Ragland's problem, would not hurt the neighbors. It would not hurt the neighbors. And we'll be happy to enter into a written agreement before title is conveyed that would, we believe would affect the interests of the city. And it would be a permanent encumbrance on Mr. Ragland's existing real estate plus a new purchase. Thank you. Any questions?
Let's look a little bit now.
I think the council had a long, long conversation to even come up with five feet. It's up to the council if they want to change that.
Okay. I understand.
The council will come up if that's what they want to do.
I understand. I would ask that the council come up with that as its solution. That solves the problem.
Is that something we can talk about later in the closed session?
No. That's not me.
To sell the property?
That's a different property.
That's a different property.
So the council's option would be, first of all, to open the auction, find out if there's any bidders that are willing to meet the minimum bid. That would be the first step. And then if there's an acceptable bid received from a member of the public, then there would be a call for any additional bids on the property. And then the council has a choice to accept the bid if there is one, or reject all bids.
The price of that minimum, the minimum price is obviously going to go up because you're going from five feet to thirteen and a half feet with base the twenty-one, twenty thousand off of five feet.
Four thousand.
Four thousand per foot.
That would probably be true and up to discussion. But tonight, the only thing the council could consider is whether or not to sell five feet.
With that being said, we'll open the bidding and see if we have a bid at the minimum for five feet.
What's your bid?
Your bid's twenty-one five?
What was it, twenty-five or twenty-five?
Twenty-one five.
It was twenty thousand plus fifteen hundred dollars for the pipe.
Yep.
Mr. Ragland will bid five thousand dollars.
Five thousand?
Yes, sir.
Any more bids? Okay, we'll close the bidding. So now the council could accept or reject that offer?
I make a motion we reject.
Second? Motion to reject the bid. Roll call.
Beckman?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Stackham?
Yes.
Waltman?
Yes.
Okay, we have rejected bids. Anything else? Thought we'll move on? We'll open the public hearing on a proposal that aims to a general obligation corporate purpose law agreement. Is there any public input? There is no public input, the public hearing is closed. There'll be no action on that tonight. Okay, we're viewing, consider closed for storm drain, Speaker Park.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Is that the public hearing that you were gonna open, but he left because he thought it was another date?
I don't know. It was just later in the agenda, so I don't think that was very...
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we have new quotes on Speaker Park. Mason?
Okay, for the storm drain on Speaker Park, in the timeframe I have been here, this has been brought up, so I was asked to get quotes. It's the corrugated metal pipe that goes underneath the sidewalk and everything. We tried to camera it, we couldn't get very far because the, I'll call it the tin whistle, the corrugated metal pipe has disintegrated over time. So when you look at the sheet of paper that you have in front of you, so the first price is if they do everything, remove the concrete and dispose of the concrete, lay the new pipe, lay the new sidewalk, lay the new bench pad, that's on there. The next option is if the city goes, if we go down there with our equipment and we remove the sidewalk and we remove the pad, and then they replace the corrugated metal pipe and bed it properly and connect it properly, and then re-pour the pad for the bench and the sidewalks.
So, council, the city of Hurley usually has their meetings on this night, and there's a matter up there that they request my attendance for. So I figure...
I don't know, is there a typo between option three and four A? Or what's the difference between the two? Well, they're both the same price, I just see two options there.
So option four A is the city removing the concrete pad for the bench. So the first portion of it is the corrugated metal pipe replacing that. And then option three A is, well, three A is us removing the concrete. And then when you go down to four A...
If this one says city to remove concrete, four A does?
Three A has to.
Okay, and I don't know what you have different than?
Well, one is seven foot long with rebar, the other one's five concrete sidewalk panels, is it two? Are them two?
It's two different things. So the...
They just happen to be the same price.
The seven foot long is the pad that the bench sits on. It's nineteen foot long up at the top, and then it narrows down, kind of like an hourglass, down to seven foot. Does that make sense? I'll take trapezoid.
And then I have another question here. In this bid, you know, it's got where the city removes the concrete, but I see we got in the bid, the total bid of fourteen hundred fifty dollars for a machine labor excavator. Can we not do that part too?
So that is the Dennison Beach one?
We only bid one.
He only bid that one. He did not bid the storm drain.
We only have one bid for...
So project one is the storm drain only?
Yeah, Blackhawk Construction only bid on project two. Lombus, Boost Construction only bid on, or bid on both projects. So there's two projects. You have one bid for project one, and you have two bids for project two.
So project one was Boost?
Yes.
Correct. It went out to four different contractors, and that is the only bid that we received. Yes.
Yes.
There's two on Dennison Beach?
Yes.
Yes. A little bid would be Boost at ninety-three sixty.
So if...
Project two.
For project two. So we aren't talking about project two yet, we're just talking about project one. Separate them out.
So... So Boost is the sixty-eight fifty-nine or seventy-eight fifty-nine, whether we leave the concrete in or out? Or the city removes the concrete, right? So that was Boost?
Correct.
Yes.
And the second one was Boost also?
Yeah, but we aren't, we aren't, don't look at project two, you're just looking at project one.
Okay.
Anybody have any more questions?
I make a motion we hire Boost for the seventy-eight fifty-nine, let him take care of the whole thing.
One second then. Roll call.
It's done his specifications and everybody.
Frank?
Yes.
Waltman?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Stackham?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, now we can do a project two.
Okay, so now when you look at project two, and you look at, if you look at the Blackhawk Construction bid, you gotta do some math on that, and I did the math for us. So if you look at the top, it says concrete and concrete. Okay, so that's the top, the eight thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars is deported at four inches thick. So if you do that, plus, don't add the five inch thick concrete, but you do everything else, that comes up to twelve thousand four hundred and sixty. That's with the four inch thick concrete. If he does, if he pours it at five inch thick, which is what Blackhawk Construction says he prefers support roads at, then you eliminate that eight thousand seven hundred seventy-five, and you use the nine thousand six hundred fifty-two, and that bill comes up to fourteen thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars and forty-six, or ninety-six cents. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. So then you have Boost's bid for him to do everything. And as you read through this, this is us removing all the concrete, or the asphalt, and digging up to remove our interduct that is through the sewer line. The only thing I couldn't make off of the videos is how many, if there's a service connection for a resident, that needs to be put back in, obviously. That would be a change order based off of that. I believe there might be one, maybe two, on the ten-foot section of pipe that we will put in to replace the section of clay tile that will be removed. Does that make sense?
So Boost's bid is ninety-three sixty on this, and Blackhawk's whatever?
Twelve thousand four hundred and sixty or fourteen...
And Boost's, it doesn't state how thick the concrete will be, it just says the length.
But no less than four, but for five, it says.
Oh, okay. That'd be C four kind of thing.
Well, and actually, that was, they put the numbers into our, what we had asked them to do. So we had asked no less than four, but for five. So we don't really know if he's gonna pour it at four or five inches. That's not necessarily determined. Just, you know.
Right. So what you see with the Boost stuff where it says project one, project two, that is exactly what was emailed to every contractor. Everybody got the exact same thing, everything was specified the exact same way to everybody.
So Boost is two or four to the west, right?
Correct.
We're doing the labor to tear it out.
We're tearing it out.
A whole? Right.
Correct. Whether it was Blackhawk or not, because we, we bid it that way. At the, if you look at the notes, the city will remove current interduct and sewer pipe, and the city will remove the existing road.
So I make the motion we accept the ninety-three sixty.
So, and as you can tell on the very first page of that, it says projects must be completed no later than October thirty-first of 2024. We put a deadline on it, that way we don't have a contractor, whether it's Boost or whoever else we sent it out to, they push us off until February, March because they didn't plan on doing it. We put it... That I can't tell you besides what the council would like to do.
That's it?
Roll call.
Beckman?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Stackham?
Yes.
Waltman?
Yes.
Jason, how far away from this Dennison Beach thing? How far away is that from you?
It's up around the corner.
Yeah, it's over in front of, in front of Stamlanders? Tagel. Yeah, between Tagel and Stamlanders?
Correct.
Could get part of it, it would sound...
Okay, we want to consider a financial software upgrade with G-Works.
So Kay and I have been talking about this for quite a while. We did kind of take a look at the software here in the last couple of weeks. Our current software for utilities and financial is gonna probably become obsolete within the next eighteen months, I would say. So we're gonna be forced to go to this no matter what. We have been having significant issues with our current system going down because right now it's in-house based. We have Kay's computer kind of acts as the server, and I can't work in the system more than probably about ten minutes and I get kicked out. Nobody's been able to, we've changed different computers, nobody's been able to figure out the reason behind that. The software upgrade basically would be going to a cloud-based system. Right now, front desk is cloud-based. We log into it and try and do utilities, but basically it would be taking all the modules over HR, the financial system, over into a cloud-based program. I'll backtrack just a little bit. Currently, with the way we have the online utility system, we only have purchased so many people, I said spots, for utility customers. In order for us, I think we maybe have, what, five left?
Four.
Four left?
Yeah.
And we keep, as Kay wants to say, killing people off in the system to try and make us more room as people come on online wanting to either pay online or get their utility bills online, or however they want to do it. By going to this upgrade, that eliminates that because to purchase more is fairly expensive, to purchase another block of five hundred users. So I've been holding off doing that just because knowing at some point we would probably be going to this. So that's another probably caveat to this as well, that we're just running out of people or users that we can, we have room for. So they're willing to, the conversion process, I mean, it's gonna be fairly expensive for us to get over to the system because there's a lot of the conversions. They're willing to waive the five thousand dollars on the implementation and onboarding. The software is about twenty-four thousand a year, the annual subscription. We're paying about thirteen thousand now. So it's gonna be a little bit more expensive. At some point, you know, this will get broke down into the various departments that use it. So, you know, it wouldn't just be administrative, it would be electrical, water, sewer. You know, we all would be buying into it. But at some point, we aren't gonna help. So we're actually trying to get this done sooner rather than later.
Any questions from the council?
They think, we're looking through the budget process, we had something there for...
We budgeted twenty-five, they think it was twenty-five.
So now this budgeting?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I see some. I'll make a motion we...
One second then. Roll call.
Waltman?
Yes.
Stackham?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
So Jason, you want to tell us about the electric department's trencher trailer?
So currently, if we have to trailer the trencher, we have that deck-over trailer that the tongue has been welded on twice, as I'm told. The decking wood is shot. It's got holes in it, we did pull the trencher up there. Broke some more boards when we did it. I personally do not believe that it is safe. So in order to get our trencher somewhere, we either drive it at three and a half miles an hour, which we know that because we timed it, or we have to use the trailer that I feel is unsafe. The trailer that we have for the mini is not big enough per the axle weights. It has, that trailer has two six-thousand-pound axles on it. The trencher is anywhere from twelve to fourteen thousand, depending on how much hydraulic fluid, how much fuel's in it. That's what Chad with Vermeer told us. So talking to Vermeer, the guy, or the company that built our trencher, what you have in front of you is, the first quote is for a one-year-old trailer that their salesman uses or has used to take demo equipment somewhere. It has two ten-thousand-pound axles on it. The next quote on there is the price of a brand... The next quote on there is the price of a brand-new one. And then you have pictures of that. And then I called, I always mispronounce this, Haley's and Carroll. They gave me an option for two trailers, a twenty-four-foot trailer and a twenty-two-foot trailer. They, however, only have two seven-thousand pound axles on them. I did call Storm Lake, uh our Northlake Truck and Trailer in Storm Lake, which is who we bought our mini excavator trailer from. And they no longer carry a line that is big enough to carry the type of equipment that we need to carry. All they carry is Aluma trailers, so he refused to give a bid.
So does this trailer have something to do with the warning on it or anything?
I cannot answer that, Dave. If I had to guess, if it's anything like anything else with Vermeer that they give us, they typically have been giving us a year from the time that we write the chat.
So if we updated trailers, because I agree the deck-over trailer is probably not the safest bet. If Whitey and I went down, looked at the boards, they're pretty bad. If we updated trailers, couldn't we get, could we get rid of the deck-over trailer and the skid loader trailer or the mini X trailer and use one?
Could we? I don't disagree that we could. However, I will play devil's advocate on this. There's times that we're having to take the skid loader to fix a water main break over by thirty acres or somewhere over that direction and he's out in the country with the mini. So now I don't, how do I get it over there besides driving the skid loader at five and a half miles an hour halfway around the lake? Compared to if we have a trailer, I can throw it on the trailer, we can go over there, it's gonna take us ten minutes compared to forty-five minutes to drive it over there?
And I agree that it's nice to have excessive equipment. But with our budget and money shortfall, I don't know why we couldn't get by with one for a while. And then my next question I'm gonna ask you guys, would you rather have a tilt bed than the ramp ones?
So based off of talking to Chad with Vermeer, this is what he does for a living. He said, yeah, tilt beds are great, but he said we will love this trailer no matter what for the trencher aspect of it. I'm not gonna tell you for the mini aspect aspect of it, because I did not propose that question to him.
Cause I found a tilt bed one in twenty twenty-five with eight thousand, eight thousand pound axles, which is sixteen thousand GBW for eighty-eight hundred dollars. Brand new, twenty twenty-five. And it's a total of twenty-two foot long. And it's a tilt bed, so you wouldn't have the ramps. Personally, when I'm hauling stuff, this is only my personal, I like the tilt beds because you're not having the ramps go up and down, worrying about breaking up the tilt bed. Now, on the flip side, the tilt bed needs a little bit more maintenance.
Don't disagree with that. At the end of the day, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna look at Trent and ask which one he prefers, because ninety-nine percent of the time, he's the one having to put it on there.
Are you asking me?
Yes.
I, I mean, I use a tilt, I use the mini every week. We have a tilt bed on the mini trailer. Um I have talked to a company that has used the same one that Vermeer has quoted us. And he told me that he loved that trailer. The only reason he didn't keep it is he went bigger with his equipment. He told me that we would love that trailer. That's just coming from a guy that's used it that I trust. Would a tilt bed trailer be better? I, I don't know. I don't, I haven't driven the trencher up on a tilt bed trailer, so I don't know. I know, I know driving the trencher up on our deck-over trailer is not the funnest thing in the world. So I don't know, can't answer that question.
At the end of the day, I don't care if we buy the eight thousand or whatever price that trailer is. I just wanna make sure that I have the equipment, A, that's safe for my guys to put their equipment on and they're not gonna um have maybe an accident, whether in their pants or roll the trencher off. And that we can go do our job in a timely effe- effective manner. If the eight-thousand dollar trailer is the one that the council that Dale has, I don't care. I just wanna make sure I have the equipment to get my guys to do our jobs that we need to do in a safe and timely manner.
Well, in my opinion, if we go with an eight, this one, I'm just talking about a lot of this, eight-thousand dollar trailer, sell the deck-over trailer, we're gonna be able to get something for it. Trailer's worth something. And then sell that pickup.
I don't disagree that three fifty needs to get sold.
And that they'll offset that eighty-eight hundred, nine-thousand dollar trailer. And it's a, and it's a tilt bed. What's the weight? Sixteen thousand. Sixteen thousand? Yep. Do you think there's any opportunity that won't have bigger equipment than that that we would need in the future or?
Are you giving permission to buy bigger equipment?
Well, I'm just wondering, you know.
I mean, I, I've talked to Jason about this before, um since we fix our own water mains. When the time comes to upgrade our mini, I would like to maybe go a step bigger, just get a, so then we can get a little bit deeper with it. Um so I mean, we're going up a size in that. Now, I don't, I don't know what the mini weighs, don't ask, because I have no idea, but.
It was just over seven thousand pounds.
Okay, so.
What I looked up, it was like seventy-two, thirty-five, something like that.
So say you go a size bigger and it adds two thousand more pounds. You know, I have no idea, but.
What, what, what would the next size bigger be? Do you know the mile number by chance?
We have a thirty-five.
Right. So, so do they make a forty-five?
I don't.
That I don't know.
Has not been on my list to try to find a price of.
So this Vermeer trailer would take care of that, is what you're saying?
It, it gives us enough axle to haul anything, I think, in the future that we should have, if we should happen to go bigger.
The Vermeer one would hold it and the one that Dale.
Yeah, either one.
Here, yep. Where was the one that you had?
I, it's just on Facebook, it's a, it's a dealer at Brookings, South Dakota.
Okay.
There's, there was another one at Olson down in Carroll, but I didn't.
Yep.
And I, and I told Jason when we dropped the pack, we'll check with Olson, because they sell trailers. There's Olson down in Atlantic that's got a lot of trailers.
Right.
Personally, I like the tilt bed.
Yeah.
That's personal. And I have, and I have the other time, and I don't like it because them ramps are frickin' heavy and you're trying to put them down in the back, but that's, that's me.
No, I mean, we, we have no complaints about our tilt bed for our mini. I mean, that's, I can't.
I'm gonna make a motion that we go with the right base without. Second?
Second.
We'll call.
Walton?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Beckman?
I don't know which way we're going, so.
Paul, I got it. Vermeer. Sorry, Vermeer.
Stachem?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Okay, we need to discuss. Let's uh, oh, we're discussing the lease from Billboard.
Yep, so um I was not aware, um I guess that we had a billboard with a lease and apparently it was up um back in, well, the, the, the lease was signed in January of um two thousand and nineteen, but the billboard wasn't erected, so we didn't start paying on the lease until July and the lease said that we would make annual payments in July. Unfortunately, we missed the one for twenty twenty-four, which um so twenty twenty-four has not been paid, but um Randy came into my office and had said that he would like to renegotiate the terms from seventy-five dollars a year to seventy-five dollars a month. Um so I told him that that renegotiation would have to come to council.
Do we need the billboard? No. Take it down.
Was that a motion ready?
Yep.
A motion to take the billboard down.
Yeah, I can.
Second? We'll call.
Stachem?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
You'll take care of that, Jason?
Yes, sir.
Okay, discussion, discussion of the consideration proposals for the water system evaluation and recommendation.
So Jason and I, um we got, um so to try and start moving forward on um the water well, um the water plant um and the water tower, primarily the well, um we went out and asked um two engineering groups to take a look at a proposal um for us on what that would entail. So we asked DGR and we asked JEO, um basically trying to compare apples to apples. Um Jason, you know, do you wanna make a comment on this?
I I have worked with both engineering companies over the years. I can't tell you I favor one or the other. I think they both do good work. I mean, it's like any other work, you're probably gonna have some bumps in the road, but um I, I think when you look at the pricing of it, um if you go to page two of the DGR one.
It'd be page forty-five.
And you look at the bottom of what they're proposing to do, um I think we can probably remove the optional calibration. And because that's the hydraulic modeling of our system, we already do our fire flow testing. We know what our GPMs of all of our hydrants are. Our equipment has been updated, so uh I don't think we need to pay them to go do the exact same thing that we do uh when we do our hydrant flushing. So when you look at their price of stuff, you're looking at fifty thousand to thirty-eight thousand. To do damn near about the exact same thing.
So is this going to give us proposals on options with our current water tower raise, like we've got about raising it or making it a little bigger to
Correct.
For pressure, plus.
A new well and new treatment.
So basically, it's, it's working on the well, water, the water plant and the water tower. And it, basically, this would be having them put together what the proposal is on the next step.
Cause you have to have this step done before you can go and start to get your SRF funding or your CDBG or any of that stuff or hiring your simmering coils, whatever, before we look at the financing aspect. You have to have that preliminary engineering report.
So this is just a preliminary report, it's not gonna be a completely engineering thing like they did, like JEO did for some of them?
It'll be the preliminary engineering report, which then you can turn around and use that to go towards your actual engineering report, which saves you a little bit of money because they take a lot of this information, put it over to this one. And then we can start to go towards the funding aspects of things.
Is this gonna help us with our northwest water pressure issue?
If the tower were to be raised, yes. Gravity's never failed, at least I haven't found a place where it's failed yet. The higher we go, the more pressure we're gonna have coming out. It's gonna create more pressure up there. We will have to, what will end up having to happen is they'll have to put in a pressure-reducing valve on this side, because the higher you go, it's gonna add two-point-three-one feet, uh pounds per square inch of pressure in that water line. So if we go up twenty feet, you take that times two-point-three-one, that's how much more pressure we're gonna be adding to the entire system. So the system, the side of the system where we don't have bad pressure, you'll put in a pressure-reducing valve, which will release the pressure back down to where we're currently about sitting at. It might go up a little bit, not a ton. But it's gonna raise the pressure on that side where we're not putting the reducing valve. Does that make sense? They also call them elevation valves too.
So you put that in there, I'm just kinda curious about the piping, you know, that's got some age on there, will we be blowing some? I, I, it's a gas, I know that, but what?
You want my honest opinion?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's nice.
We'll find the weak spots still, right?
Hey, we will find the weak spots very quickly.
And I think that's something we should know about going into it, because it shouldn't be a surprise to anybody.
But that's the same thing we have found with the booster pump thing.
Correct.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah.
Yep, that's right, right.
And, and I'm the first person to tell you, I'm against the booster pump for the one reason. It's mechanical, it's gonna fail. Gravity's never failed. I mean, I think we've all fallen and gravity hasn't stopped us yet.
I mean, the biggest thing is, these are proposals to get us started going in the direction that we need to go.
It puts the pen to the paper.
At some point, we're gonna, we have to figure out any well. We have to figure out, you know.
And we have to do this to get to the point to figure.
Yes.
Correct.
Then we have this question.
I will find the money. It's not technically, because this wasn't something that I had exact dollars for, but we will make sure, I mean, we don't have a choice but not to
Right.
start moving this project forward or else, you know, if we delay this for another year until we actually have it in the budget.
What would we take away from the budget for this?
So correct me if I'm wrong, but if you do the preliminary engineering report and you do the engineering report, I believe you can put that under a construction loan. And then when you roll into the actual phase of it, all that stuff can be, are, it might not be all of it, I think it might be like seventy-two percent of it can be rolled into your final loan for your project. Does that make sense? So trying to, we're gonna have to come up with something, obviously, but.
That's why I'm asking, where are we gonna rob Peter to take Paul for the meantime? Cause that's basically what you're saying.
Well, yeah, but I mean, of course, we're sitting at the beginning of the budget year, so do I have capital funds sitting there that haven't been expended out that we can use? You know, in the meantime to start this project and, and start moving it forward? Yes. Between the water and the sewer system, you know, we have money or even, you know, there's some capital funds sitting on the sewer side that are not expended out. That when I was looking at things the other day that, you know, um but this really needs to come from the water side. Um, you know, I think that there's some, some capital funds there that we can probably try and utilize um that are currently we don't have anything, I mean, I think I've, I've added the, the water budget to accommodate some capital funds that could be used for this. Not necessarily where they specific to this design, but we put money in there for the idea that something like this was going to come about.
I just wanna make sure we have something that we can get by with for, out for two years, that we're robbing that money.
Right, yeah.
Sounds like, it sounds to me like there may be something at the end of the budget year that we have to cut off and say we can't do because we use this money here. So there's money there, that hasn't really been earmarked for things, that this is gonna take that earmark.
Yes.
And then later down the line, when we have a surprise, those are the things we're gonna have to figure out.
Right.
What we can't.
In a sense, yes.
Not using the right amount.
Yeah, you're, you're.
I agree we have to do this.
Yeah, yeah, so I don't think we're robbing Peter to take Paul yet, because we haven't, we haven't spent any money yet. We're not at the end of the budget trying to figure out, well, we only have this much money left over. We're at the beginning, so the end of the budget is when we're gonna have to figure out, well, we, we spent this thirty-eight, which we had to do, and now somebody might have something in the budget, they want a little gravy on the backside or something, and we might have to cut off it later, you know what I mean?
I think.
Yeah, I'm wondering what that is.
And, and I think, well.
Well, cause I know we used to have like, I don't know if it's still in there, set aside for a new bucket truck.
Oh, yeah.
You know, where we, where we can use, if we had to, we can utilize that.
Whoa, 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 guys.
What are we talking about here?
Yes, that's what I mean.
You just got an unbudgeted trailer.
We have, there's some capital funds sitting there that we have, that haven't been completely allocated that this can be used for.
That's what I'm, that's.
Yes.
So I will throw the caveat out there that part of the preliminary engineering report is they're gonna, they're gonna give us every option. And one of the options is gonna be hooking up to real water. What that cost is to run the pipe and it's and then what real water charges per hundred thousand or a thousand gallons or whatever it is. Um sometimes, I'm just gonna be honest with you, sometimes that number is kind of a sticker shock. But it is, it is an option that they will put in front of you. It's not an option you have to take. But I'm just being upfront and honest with you when I tell you.
I don't even know if we need the option, but I don't even think that's a, I have the option.
So they have to, under, part of the funding aspect of it is they have to explore every available option that is available. And because real water is within a certain distance of us, they have to give that option. My personal opinion is, no. I think you lose your identity when you have to purchase all your water, when we still have the valuable way of punching a well and being in control of that aspect of it. That's my personal opinion.
And this is not, I mean, the other side note, this is. And this is not, I mean, the other side note, this is not a water rate analysis. This is just, this is our water system analysis.
Correct.
It is not, this isn't a, a water rate study by any means. This is just basically what we have, what we need to do, and how do we go about doing it?
I, I think we go into the lesser of the two, if you're happy with either one of that JEO.
That was the same group that was here.
Correct.
I thought they did a fantastic job presenting, I was a little disappointed, honestly, to hear about, well, there is a culvert underneath there, but they did...
And I'd have to, I'd have to go back and look and see, I wonder if they were talking about the one that there isn't a culvert and not the one fully to the west, so I don't, I don't know if that was completely...
But irregardless, they did a five, they did a fantastic job.
Is there a motion to do accept JEO?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
My second.
Will call.
Beckman?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Okay, we'll have the first reading ordinance 531.
Ordinance 531, an ordinance amending chapter 92, amending provisions related to water rates for the city of Lakeview, being enacted by the Lakeview City Council, section one, chapter modified, chapter 92.02 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Lakeview, Iowa, is repealed when the following adopted and leave thereof. Rates for service, water service shall be furnished at the following monthly rates. Within the city, first 2,000 gallons or part thereof, $16.46 gallons; over 2,000 gallons, $4.70 per 1,000 gallons; meter charge, $1.50. Outside city limits, first 2,000 gallons or part thereof, $24.69 gallons; over 2,000, $7.05 per 1,000 gallons; meter charge, $1.50. Bulk water, $18.67 for the first 1,000 gallons, $10.14 per 1,000 gallons thereafter. Bulk water, water dispenser at fire station, $7.00 for every 1,000 gallons. In no case shall the minimum water service charge for water be, water used be less than $16.46 per month. Chapter 92.04 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Lakeview is repealed when the following adopted and leave thereof. Billing for water service. Late payment penalty, bills not paid when due shall be considered delinquent. A one-time late payment penalty, a $20 per account per month shall be added to each delinquent bill. Chapter 92.05 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Lakeview is repealed when following adopted and leave thereof. Service discounted, discontinued fees. A reconnection fee of $50 shall be charged to a customer whose service has been disconnected due to delinquency. Chapter 92.09 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Lakeview is repealed when the following adopted and leave thereof. Temporary vacancy within the city, a fee of $50 shall be charged for shutting the water off at the curb stop. Outside city, a fee of $57.5 shall be charged for shutting the water off at the curb stop. All ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. This ordinance shall be effective after its final passage, approval and publication passed and adopted in seven, whoops, well, yeah, you're going to end up finalizing it on October, but I need to change the first readings, it looks like, September 30.
Can just confirm, there's nothing in here for the tapping fee yet?
No, that was the other, that was the other ordinance, and I wasn't able to get that finished.
The most of 31 was 531 was ran.
Make that motion.
Second?
My second.
Um, you did make one mistake while you was reading the, at the late penalty, payment penalty, you said $20, and it's read here 25.
20, 25.
Right.
Yes, 25 per account, I was probably, yeah.
Yep.
Will call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Walton? Beckman?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
This reading is approved. Okay, ordinance 532, sewer rates.
An ordinance, ordinance 532, an ordinance amending chapter 99, amending provisions related to sewer rental utility rates and sewer debt service. Being enacted by the city of Lakeview, chapters modified, 99.06 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Lakeview, Iowa, is repealed when the following adopted and leave thereof. Wastewater, first 2,000 gallons or part thereof supplied, $31.57 gallons; over 2,000 gallons supplied, $8.96 per 1,000 gallons. Each contributor shall pay sewer service charges for the use of and for service supplied by the municipal wastewater system in the amount of $31.57 per month for two gallons supplied. In no case shall the minimum service charge be less than $31.57 per month. Additionally, each contributor shall pay the rate of $8.96 per 1,000 gallons in excess of the 2,000 gallon minimum referred to above as determined by the water meters provided by the city, passed and adopted.
I'll make a motion to approve this. Second?
My second.
Will call.
Frank?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Or my, Johnson?
That's like a choose approved. Okay, we need a motion to go into closed session?